Welcome back. That was exciting. So now we are going to pick back up on item 10, unfinished business. Can I have a motion to approve as a first read, policy 1800 donations, gifts and grants to the district, and policy 4321 programs for students with disabilities under the IDEA and New York education law, Article 89, and policy 4773 diploma and credential options for students with disabilities? Can I have that motion? Second?
Second.
Okay. And discussion?
Sure. Just a little bit of background on donations, gifts and grants. That used to actually be a policy called Gifts from the Public. And our, you know, things have changed here, so we do have donations, gifts and grants now, and it's not just gifts from the public. This has been sitting with the policy committee for the better part of the year. We've been doing quite a few revisions on it and going back and forth with council and with Greg's guidance to determine what legally, fiscally, we can be including in these policies and not. So I do feel confident that this has been thoroughly vetted.
But the only substantive change is the $1,000 floor.
The $1,000 floor has changed, and also just adding the fact that we are now looking for, the setup of it originally was much different. It was about soliciting. Now we have to include processes for how we solicit it, and also a chain of command that we go from if a teacher is interested in asking for a grant, what their chain of command is for that also.
But forgive me, I'm looking at the red line?
Yeah.
What, the only thing I see changing from the policy we had there was the number, the $1,001. Am I missing something here? There's considering the following?
Right. We changed some of the language also.
That's non-substantive.
But nothing, except also there was the piece about whether the superintendent, it's before the board can actually present a gift that's over $50,000, that the superintendent has to have the board acknowledge that first before it's presented. Those are the only major changes, other than the $1,001, over $1,001. But really, just that we didn't have the donations, gifts and grants, and it was just looking for gifts from the public. That's pretty significant.
Well.
So we had no way to guide how we were asking for money. We only had a way to guide how we were receiving it.
So previously, any gifts, books, things like that, to the district, softball money for trips and things like that, you'd see $500 here, $500 there, had to be approved by the board, and it was typically on consent with a little information on it. And now it's going to a $1,000, anything under $1,000, the board wouldn't even see, wouldn't even necessarily get notice of. So what's the rationale of carving the board? I didn't see it as particularly burdensome for the board, and I always thought it was really important because I looked to make sure that there were no strings attached to the gift that ran afoul of our, you know, sort of sensibilities or mission. What's the rationale for the $1,000 carve out?
I think that the policy covers the checking that there are no strings attached. I mean, we can't, for example, I may have somebody who wants to donate some vacuum cleaners that operate themselves, like a Roomba or whatever that is. You know, I have to know as the building principal, I have to know as the superintendent, that that is going to have strings attached. It may seem like a nice gift, but it actually impacts our employees. It impacts our ability to, you know, maintain and operate these things. So I feel strongly that this safeguards that in the superintendent's decision of whether or not to accept that.
So we wouldn't see it ever if it didn't pass all that muster. I'm just wondering, if it wasn't a burden to the board to see this stuff, why?
Well, New York State school boards recommends a $1,000 threshold. So, I mean, I don't see the reason really to check on the distinction between $500 and $1,000. I'm not sure it was that significant for us.
I think in the past, the board, in talking, you know, a little bit about this, in the past, we've been notified, the board's been notified of all gifts, independent of the dollar amounts, I think.
I think the difference is the approval.
Uh huh.
So if somebody wants to give $100 rather than say, you know, what we currently do is say you have to write a letter to the board asking them to accept it. I could accept it, write them a letter of thanks and inform the board. I think, you know, what we could do, and we probably hadn't thought this through well enough, what we could do is separate the informing from the approval.
Right.
I think the issue that came up and that school boards was getting around was that every single thing had to be approved by the board.
So we have, you know, end of the year, the graduating class, everything needs to be approved as a gift, and that some of that can be approved by the superintendent.
And some of the stuff like Greg was saying before, some of it, it's hard to really put a value on it, like it's used books, we don't really know the dollar amount.
I think that was the rationale.
I think you're right in saying that inform and approve are two different things. Of course, the board should be informed.
Also, maybe that's the solution here, is just, you know, approved and...
Yeah, we could certainly edit it into the text if you want to hold this, yeah.
Well, I think we do. We say we'll accept. You know what I mean? That's the approval. So if the superintendent of schools may accept the donations, gifts or grants for the district, that doesn't mean that the superintendent's not going to inform the board of donations, gifts and grants. So I guess the distinction is, do you think that there needs to be something in the policy about informing the people?
Right, right.
Or can we just have a policy that exists to say what we can accept and how we can accept it?
Yeah, I think the, personally, I think the board should be informed of gifts.
For example...
Is that something that goes in the policy though, or is it something that's part of the relationship between the superintendent?
Yeah, something like that would go into the policy, the, you know, and the notice to the board kind of thing.
For example, we have for the superintendent has authority to enter into contracts at $7,500 and below, then comment that at the next meeting, I inform the board of what happened. That's a little blurb I put in my notes. Similar thing could happen for gifts. If Bill accepts a gift that's under the $1,000 threshold, I would obviously be informed, and I could include it in my notes to the board at the next meeting. That could simplify that process too, and speed it up.
Sure. Procedurally, it's good, and I think it's, you know, I think it's good for people who want to give small donations, and usually the first thing I say to them is, you can't, you have to write a letter, and then after I get the letter, I'll give it to the board, and then the board will approve it, and then I'll get back to you.
Yeah. And I have no qualms with that threshold dollar thing, as long as the board's informed of any gifts approved under that, you know, with that authority.
So are you comfortable passing it, and that will be our procedure?
Well, it's a first read, so we can see if you guys...
Want to modify it? So send it back and, you know, put some language in there.
So language to include that the board will be informed.
Yeah, to the extent that any of the authority of, you know, of approval, the board's got, it's got to come to the board for over $1,000.
Right.
Any authority the superintendent uses for under $1,000, the board's notified.
You know, the one thing to consider also is if you look at, right after number nine, it does say that it does give the board the authority, the donations, gifts or grants rejected by the board and the superintendent shall be returned. So it's not, I mean, that's language that actually follows the superintendent can receive it, but it is still within the board's right to reject it. So there has to be a communication based upon that.
Right, right. Okay.
Is the volume of these types of gifts, small gifts, logistic? I mean...
Well, that's a question.
We're trying to simplify, right? So you don't want to make anything more complicated than it needs to be for, you know, someone gives a monitor for $200 bucks.
But you have, you have in the past given us a list of donations of books, of grants and...
Yeah. Anything that comes directly through here, so here would be my question, you know, where we start to run into problems. In the programs for the theater, there are parents who are angels and so on and so forth. So they give $500 to be an angel, or they give $100 to be a supporter, or they, that never comes here.
No, we never, that's true.
But that could be a one-page sheet to the board of all the financial contributions, you know?
I'm only saying I don't usually...
I see, you don't even approve those. Well, you know, those are slipping through the cracks, if you ask me, because we have pretty strict rules about, you know, gifts and tips to employ, you know, tip to the teacher, a holiday tip, and, you know, those kind of things.
I don't see a difference, frankly, between a donation of $200 to Armont Baseball and a donation as an angel to a dramatic performance. I don't really see the difference. Maybe historically, we treated them differently in terms of reporting, but fundamentally, I really don't see the difference.
I agree.
I really don't. So maybe we can come up with some way not to burden whoever will be burdened with this, but this information, I think, does have to cross our bow.
So why don't we do this? Why don't we revise this policy for the second read, and why don't we, and we'll try it out and see how it works out, and we can revise later on if we find that this isn't working to actually implement.
I think this is one period when maybe the waiting period between the first and second read gives us a chance to think about it a little bit more.
The policy committee isn't meeting again until next year, and I mean, I don't, you don't have to have this in the next meeting.
We don't have to pass it the next time it comes to us as a second read. We can look at it again.
I do think, though, that especially given just what's happened in other districts over the last, next years, I would err on the side of caution something like this, I think.
Okay. Yeah, and we do need to think about it a little bit, because there are car washes, bake sales.
Yeah, no, of course. Maybe, maybe where...
Maybe what goes into Student Activities Funds is not...
Yeah, we may be attacking a problem that doesn't exist.
Yeah, that's true.
That's not a...
Student Activities Fund. Yeah, that's right.
What do you think, Greg? Is Student Activities Fund the district?
It is considered part of our books, and the board is responsible for the safekeeping of that money.
But it's not a gift, it's a cookie sale.
But it has a separate set of rules. It's not, it's not the regular rules we have for audits and everything else. Just the cash needs to be safeguarded, and the rules have to be promulgated by the board.
The other thing I have to think about, though, with regard to something like the theater programs you mentioned, some people donate anonymously, and that's not going to come up as much as when you have a donation, let's say, to the baseball trip to Florida. So at some point, that will have to be, and, you know, people's anonymity has to be respected. At some point, that may have to be something that's worked into the language, just in terms of the reporting.
Right. We don't always know who's donating, like, books or, I guess we do, you do actually tell us.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
So is it safe to say, moving forward with our work, that we're okay with the current wording about receiving donations, gifts and grants, but what we're concerned about is notification to the board?
Informing.
Right, and inform to the board? You're not concerned about the board's approval of anything under $1,000, just that there's a notification?
And the board need be notified, and if, after the notification, if it really shocked the conscience, we could always return it and, you know, do exactly what politicians do when find out that somebody untoward...
I didn't mean to accept the money.
Yes. Walk it back, as they say.
Never taken an installment.
So we'll read this in September.
Right.
I think we should take it off next year.
What about the other policies?
Until you pay attention, you're going to have to consider this next year.
Yeah. You might be doing this, yeah.
That's right.
Okay. And what about the other two policies that are on?
Okay, so for the other two policies, these are special education policies. Some of them had not been updated since 2007. Some of the language of them had to change. For example, our 4773 diploma and credential options for students with disabilities, that includes some of the new credential options that are out there, such as the C-DOS credential or the skills and achievement credentials. That had to be changed in the title. We had to switch from IEP diplomas. Now, this is something that I started working on with Jill, who's the director, and it went through a couple of renditions with council, a specified person for special education. Jill and I looked over the edits from council, had more questions and went back to them, and this is what has now been accepted and approved by both Jill and council for both policies.
And it's probably going to change in the next year.
Might. It might, right. But at least we're staying updated on that our policies are matching what our programs are doing.
But this allows for a local diploma? I thought they got rid of that when they insisted on the region's diploma for everybody.
Uh huh. No, we do have a local diploma.
But I thought we were required to get rid of it.
We have a local diploma for students, you want to explain this?
No, go ahead.
We have a, for our students who are getting our C-DOS credentials, everybody gets a local diploma. We're not allowed to have the local diploma supersede any other diploma.
Right, yeah.
For special education students who are not eligible for a region's diploma, who might be getting a C-DOS diploma or a skills achievement, they're eligible for a local diploma to prove that they graduated from the school.
Okay.
So for instance, if we have a student with special needs who actually graduates from this program and moves on to another program, that's like their credential that they can move on from there to a different program.
And that's what's likely to change in the next year, because the board regions is all in favor of it.
Struggling with that.
No, no, they're now the majority, and they're now really in favor of an alternative path.
Right. We have to accept alternative pathways.
Okay, thanks.
So I have to say that the policy committee did not feel that they had the expertise for this necessarily, nor do I, so we really needed to rely heavily on Jill and council for that.
Okay.
All right, thank you so much. All right, so we have the motion on table with revisions. All in favor? Okay. Nice work. Thank you. Brings us to 10.2, which is a review of the 2015, 2016 board goals. So we have this on today. We're going to ask, Bill is going to give us another update on how well we're doing up at this point on the board goals that we had for this past year.
Yeah.
And really just, just begin to talk about board goals for next year. Now, we have two board members that are retiring that have institutional knowledge that can have an opinion on what the board goes, but obviously, we're not going to really decide on board goals till our, till new board members come in. But just to give us a little update on how we've done, on what we proposed for our goals for this past year, and just start the conversation for next year.
Yeah, I think we started talking about this in December or January, and it is a good idea to review it at the end, certainly. You set five goals that I would describe as very essential. They go right at the heart of the work that the district does, and I just want to review those briefly this year. The first was excellence in teaching and learning. There are a long, there is a long list of things that we did this year that certainly fulfilled this. We had several updates from Tim in particular about Common Core, EPPR, professional development for teachers. We included discussion of technology in Common Core in the site base this year, which was very successful. You specifically had several reports on STEAM, and when the BHEF made some significant grants to our STEAM program, you heard more about how that was going to be used. We had a tri-states report as a curriculum conversation, and that was linked, in addition, to our discussion of a possible theme that might counterbalance STEAM, the idea of a globalization theme that would counterbalance STEAM, and that would be a focus for social studies, English and world languages. That's being worked on very actively as a result of our conversation. You met with the HCC tech team. You remember Dawn Selness, and her team came and talked to us about what they're doing in the lab there. We had curriculum conversation goals on 21st century skills, and that's had a big impact on all of the work that we're doing. And we had an extensive discussion on performance assessment. If you remember, the social studies teacher from the high school came and talked about what we're doing with performance assessment. Actually, I think we did more with curriculum than we have done in the past couple of years. Second goal was the communications. The second goal was fiscal accountability and communications. The communications committee took the brochure that we had effectively revised last year, and I think made it even more effective, much cleaner. The communication through the budget brochure was good. We followed up in terms of talking about fiscal responsibility with the usual visits to the principals' coffees, to the PTSA, budget information committee. We've prepared a video, as we have in the past, and this year in particular, I prepared a letter to the community about some issues that were going around in the community about the budget, and I sent that to all of our parents. We had the usual five hearings, and I think the results of our work were apparent in the budget vote. 84% yes votes was pretty remarkable, and we actually had an increase in the number of voters. Our third was technology implementation. We put in a new goal this year that we would have quarterly reports. Tim gave us more than quarterly reports, actually, on what was going on with technology. Andrew Taylor, our director of technology, gave you a report specifically on technology. We applied for and received more than $300,000 in grants from the BHEF that are directed at technology and 21st century learning. We continue to build on the work we did last year with implementing one-on-one. This summer, we'll be renovating two labs, one at the high school, one at the middle school, and we're progressing with a very exciting plan at Wampus, which actually may be the, if it works out, the most advanced curriculum plan that we have in place to begin to build a center that's not focused on classroom learning and not focused on grade level learning, but a place where students could go and work on projects with those students who are not necessarily in their own classroom, not necessarily even in their own grade. We'll be talking more about that in the fall. Number four was succession planning. I think this was a particularly good year. We had to replace our high school principal and two assistant principals. We hired two of their replacements from our own staff, and they came right off of our succession planning charts. That worked out very well for us. I think the key thing with succession planning is not charts of people and not even putting people into positions. I think the real key with succession planning is the preparation we do to get people ready to apply for those positions, and once they get them, the work that we do to get them ready to implement the position. We do a lot of work to develop our people once they're in these positions. And our last category was education reform and advocacy. I think we had our best year ever. We had frequent reports from Brett, a couple of reports from me, and our PTSA, our cosponsorship of the panel with the PTSA, I think, was remarkably successful. That was a great night for us. So you guys did well, which kind of points toward next year. And, you know, what we might do, if you have any questions about what we did this year, I'll certainly answer them, but we might want to start thinking about which of these do we continue next year, which of these do we modify or replace for next year.
Right. I was thinking your initiative of that global competency, you know, that sort of big idea, it would be going, it probably falls into maybe the one that we always have, which is excellence in teaching and learning, maybe something along that lines, and maybe that touches on some of the character education that, you know, take a look at and see what's working, what's not, and cultural proficiency falls into that as well.
Robert?
Yeah?
I just think for the community's vantage point, I just want to stress how, I think, remarkable it is that we've been able to fill so many positions internally. I think that's such an important part of what makes this district so strong, is that we do train people here to move forward, and we do, once they're hired, we really do get faculty members, administrators, really inculcated in the Byron Hills culture. And there really is one, we know there is, and I think that's why we've been so successful. I think to Bill and your team, I think the proof is in the pudding, and I think we continue to do that well. I think that is really a, just a real important part of what makes this district great, is our ability to fill these key spots internally.
So you want to see it on the goals again for next year?
I'll hold my fire until July, but if someone demands a sneak preview, I'd say yes.
Right. I mean, that ends up being, I think, important as well to keep that on there. I mean, it's part of the day-to-day operation, but I like personally that it's front and center and keeps it...
Can I weigh in?
Yes, please.
First, I just want to commend you and Bill for putting this on the agenda tonight. It's really important that at the end of the year, not only we reflect on how well we did meeting our goals, but to have a conversation about what we want to keep and how we want to evolve our goals, because that's what they do. They just sort of creep along and evolve in certain areas. Because in the past, you know, the boards, or the goal setting, you know, wasn't done in a public meeting, and then when it was eventually done in a public meeting, it was sort of early fall, the administrator's goals were already set, and the board felt like it was, you know, kind of riding the coattails a little bit. This is just a really great sort of...
Yeah, a timeline to kind of...
No, it's a credit to your, to your work as president that we were able to accomplish what we did in terms of evaluations and things like that to get to the point where we're ready at this time of year to do this. So I appreciate that. That having been said, I also appreciate the significance of the advocacy piece being on the, being a goal. This was the first year we had it as a goal, and I think it legitimized it in many ways. And I would, I would advocate that advocacy remain as an emphasis and a goal, because I think it really has borne fruit for our board members to be better informed. I think it makes them better, better board members. I think it helps our community be better informed about what we can and can't do, and, you know, the limitations of the district, and oftentimes, they see, you know, with these tests and things like that, they see our, the board kind of advocating on their behalf.
Right.
And I certainly believe that the collective effort of our district with the other districts in the region and generally statewide has had a major impact collectively, because we see things happening, trends happening in Albany and Washington that are only because of sort of the public collective outcry, which, you know, the polite term is advocacy. So I would, I would like to see that remain.
Noted, yeah, Mike.
I would add, I think Brett, you stole a lot of the concepts that I was going to say, which have been really good for this board. Often, when you lay out goals and objectives like this, one or two of them, you just don't get to, or you, it's impossible to have effective, at least movement in each of those categories. And I just, the advocacy, when we formed that last year, it's hard to see how that, how we were going to play a role there. And given the changing political climate and the mandates that come down, the idea of maintaining that, I would echo, would be really important for us. We are a public school district, and that was one, at least, I didn't know how we would make an impact, how we would facilitate that goal. So the venue we have is great, the forum, so I just think it's not often clear you set broad-based goals like this, where you're able to actually check off, as you rolled off several items, Bill, around how we achieve those goals, there were many more behind that as well. So I thought that was helpful, and I just wanted to add my two cents about how positive a process that's been.
Yeah. I also have to say, you know, having just a few goals, like these five goals, and I think it really helps keep all of us focused, and I really appreciated every meeting, I mean, your curriculum conversations. I mean, we really got to know what was going on, to know if this was working, so that was fantastic. And, you know, and Greg, your financial reports also, I mean, so it really helped us know that this was not something that we did back in the summer, kind of forgot about it until now, so... now, so it worked out really well.
Can I say one thing to our board members-elect? As you think about board goals, is that, you just start to do your reading, and you start to think where you would be, there's always the, not the tension, but the discrimination in playing our goals as to what should be a goal and what is just ongoing work of a board. So just keep that in mind as you start to give some thought to where you think the board goals ought to be, because that often is an issue we wrestle with, sometimes successfully, sometimes not so successfully, but your views will certainly be important.
That's right. I mean, I guess I can foresee, but, you know, Gil tells later on about this, as technology becomes maybe a subset of excellence in learning as an ongoing thing, I don't know that it's a priority, but Gil will have to let us know what you think about that later on.
What was the one that you, the...
The competency, the global competency.
Yeah, the global competency. I would echo that. That is year in and year out cited by our returning graduates as something they were a little short on. You know, we're a little insular here in Armont, and we've made some strides, but...
And does that tie into the cultural proficiency, are our kids, you know, as...
It can dovetail into that.
Yeah. Are they as accepting and appropriate as they should be, you know, to everybody? So it kind of all falls into that. I mean, I'm always all for fiscal accountability and communication. All right, so, I mean, this is just the start of the conversation. Does anybody else have anything? Alvin Joyce, not to put you on the spot, but I just, I want to hear your voices if you have anything that you think that we need to consider moving forward, you can always let us know.
But advocacy, advocacy part of the goal is definitely so timely, I think. You know, not to beat it over head, we kind of talked about Pink Horns, but it's nice that we kind of evolved to add that. And it's, I think personally, it's, you know, with the advocacy that we've been doing has helped me just kind of stay informed and, I think, become a better board member.
And let me ask you this, and this could fall to what I was saying, is just the regular work of the board versus a goal, an overall goal, but, you know, we get talked about the transportation issue. Is that something that's just something that you guys do, it's not, doesn't become a board goal, right? The review that we were talking about doing?
Viewing looks and all of that.
Is that, does it rise to that?
Yeah.
Yeah, every year.
You know, if we were talking about, you know, the outsourcing, you know, changing over the whole fleet, you know, that kind of thing, taking that on as a district, then it would, it might raise to a goal.
Thank you, everybody. So obviously, these will be revisited later on. Appreciate the time on that. Okay, let's move on to item 10.3. We had already approved the Board of Education meeting calendar, but we do have a change. We're going to need to approve the revision, and it was a meeting in February, which was moving to, it was February 7th, it's moving to Monday, February 13th. We are informed of that. So can I have a motion to adopt a revised 2016-2017 Board of Education meeting calendar?
So moved.
And a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Wait, 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 I have a question.
Oh, sorry.
The November 15th date and the January 24th date are announced here as hold per en, only if needed. And, you know, they're really meetings every two weeks kind of thing, and if we don't have those meetings, we're talking about going a month between November and December, and then another month between January 10th and February 13th.
I think the November one ends up sometimes being the board retreat.
Yep.
So we don't actually, we don't need, it just ends up being a board retreat, so we hold it. But if we need that for public board business, then that would not be a retreat.
I just am having a hard time imagining that we would not benefit from a meeting, you know, it's a... It's felt in the past sometimes when we go from like mid-December to mid-January, and it's a month now. Granted, we've got usually a couple of weeks off in there, and it's not a big deal, but if we have a month in between meetings and school is going on and things are happening, it feels like a long time. I remember, I were going back a few years, we always tried to make sure that, you know, the meetings were spaced out so that we could get a meeting in every couple of weeks.
You don't want to go a month more than once during the year if you don't have to.
Yeah.
Even if the, and if, sometimes up to the superintendent, they say, "Look, you know, we don't have enough, what we have really is basically a consent agenda to do." Okay. But if it's listed as a hold, I leave it to the superintendent's discretion at this point. But generally, Brett's right.
This is what we did the last two years, so you might, this is not a new proposal. This is what we did the last two years, if you're comfortable, you know, I mean, if you didn't feel the loss this year.
And we've always had those meetings.
What we, what we found was the January meeting frequently was just a consent agenda and a rather short one, because we're not doing a lot of...
Well, because then the budget, then the budget season starts.
Right, then you've got your back-to-back meetings, so there's a lot. So, I mean, my opinion is that I think keep it as a hold.
One thing I would ask on the calendar, and I don't know how difficult or not, if this is done in Google Calendar, but like, that gets sent out, and if we get it electronically sent out, so we can all drop it in our calendars?
You can, actually.
But you have to take the entire school calendar with, it's on the school calendar.
It's a whole wall-to-wall calendar, not just the board calendar.
You don't want to do that, but we might be able to send you just the board meetings.
That would be great.
I think what Janine can do is set up each board meeting and then invite you to each board meeting.
Oh, that'd be good, yeah.
Oh, you have to just click on invite.
That would be lovely.
And maybe she could also set up the agenda meeting.
Once a year, I take a lunch hour of work, and I have to roll the board meetings on my calendar.
This is...
I just saved you an hour.
My client will be, my clients will be happy.
I think you can, Dylan.
All right.
Fifteen minutes, Eric.
We're okay, we keep it the way it is with the hold, okay? All right, all in favor? Okay, thank you. And then brings us to site-based year-end report.
Sure. In your packet, you'll see the site-based team end-of-year reports from each building. The building principals put that together, reflecting on their year's work. Before I highlight some things in here, let me go back to, the purpose of this came out of a Commissioner's Regulation in 1994, starting shared decision-making.
Yes, it did.
Which was the goal to bring parents and school administrators and teachers together for the purpose of school improvement. So we started it through a site-based team involving parents. I believe Ira was on that first event back in 1994.
That's right.
And while it's evolved over the years, we now make our district-wide focus, character education. Under character education, we include cultural proficiency and sustainability as well. And then what we do is, those are our district-wide goals. Each building has site-based teams and works on a regular basis, sometimes monthly, with the site-based team in the building to work on initiatives at the district level related to those district goals. District-wide, we come and we share with the buildings what's happening across the district, so that we're all unified. And over the past few years, we started including curricular topics in that, starting with Common Core, reviewing Common Core for parents, and this year had the focus on STEAM, so that we could educate our community about what's happening district-wide around our STEAM initiative. And you'll recall, we did some work around having students create the last site-based team meeting at the middle school to show off robotics and coding, which was a really successful site-based team meeting. I'll just draw your attention to, one, you could read through the reports to see, but Wampus was doing a lot of work around emotional wellness, sort of thinking about the work that Chris Bosari was doing at the high school. Deb Colliosa was talking to Bill and Jen and I about the need to do some work at Wampus around emotional wellness with the young students at Wampus, and over the past year has created several different initiatives relating to helping students deal with wellness there, including having an emotional wellness month, doing principals' coffees around it, and getting students and teachers involved in creating awareness about emotional wellness. And I like to highlight this because we actually have five teachers this summer going to the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence to do some training on a program to help bring that back in Turkey at Wampus. This grew out of a guest speaker we brought in for our superintendent's conference day a few months ago, and who was the director of the Center for Emotional Intelligence at Yale, and spoke to the faculty, and they responded quite well to him, and they had an offering of doing training in the summer. So Wampus seemed to have a core group of teachers that were really ready to start implementing it, which was playing right off of the work that they'd been doing. And so we'll be sending those teachers this summer for extensive training. They'll come back, and we'll develop a turnkey program for Wampus starting next year. So really proud of that work, and it grew out of that collaboration through the site-based teamwork.
I just want to interrupt for a second. We were talking about goals and operations and things like that. One of the sort of evolving interests or concerns I have is the student anxiety, stress, you know, that kind of thing. We're doing just so well academically, more and more and more and more and more. And I know that we're doing a lot of things in the district to develop the whole person and to support the emotional well-being of students and the mental health. It would be great if we could have a curriculum conversation, soup to nuts, on what we do on that personally, and I don't know whether my colleagues share that interest.
Well, I think, I think that discussion should take place with the new board members and to see if there's a consensus to have the superintendent arrange a curriculum conversation. Those are big deals. It's an interesting topic, but...
We've done social studies, we've done math, we've done English.
I know, I understand, but I'd like to hear, I'd like to give the administration a chance to think about it, weigh in, and hear what our board members-elect think about it as well.
Okay, thanks. Sorry, Tim.
That's great. Then I just wanted to highlight that work on Wampus, it's extraordinary.
Because actually, that's exactly what it's about.
Yeah.
It is.
So it's a great year in the site-based team, so thanks for your support.
Can I just say one, one thing, Robyn? I just got to say, Tim, I just think your reports this year have just been excellent.
Thank you.
Really, I just think they're, the organization, the presentation, the way you organize the facts, you presented to the board in such a, really some complex things in a very understandable way. You really be congratulated. I think you've...
You should be a math teacher.
Yeah. I really think you've done an exemplary job.
Do some training.
Really exemplified.
I appreciate it, thanks. Good leader who helps me think, really. Remember that in your evaluation of the superintendent.
I forgot his name. I remembered shortly.
Okay, so for my superintendent's report, I would like to note that this is an important, an important June for this board. Two members, Dr. Bart Galvin and Joyce Michaeljohn, are leaving us after six years of service. So that's six years of two board meetings every month, with the exception in the last two years of January, where I think we canceled one. All done out of dedication to the school district. No stipends, no salaries, no insurance benefits or other benefits. We did buy them a sandwich if they wanted one every Tuesday night, but that literally is the extent of it. And this board's been together for six years, that's a lot of time. It's a lot of sharing. There have been some great successes, there have been some hard questions, there's been pain, and I want to take this moment on my behalf, on my behalf personally, but also on behalf of the board, to thank them for that service, to tell them that it's made a real difference. The stability, the conscience, the kind of questions that you brought, the thoughtful questions that you brought, have helped to keep this board on track. And I think this board is recognized in the community as one that knows its pri, it's really weird having you on either side of me. I think this board is recognized as one that knows what its priorities are, and it's respected by the community because the kind of discourse that goes on here is civil and thoughtful and focused on making things better for others as opposed to having any political bent. And I say this not, people might say, "Oh, you're comparing this board to the town." I'm actually comparing this board to the country. Right now, there's a lot of, you know, I watch the same political shows everybody else does, and the commentators are constantly saying, "Oh, the Republican Party is so split." And now, you know, as we're getting to the Democratic convention, "Oh, the Democratic Party is so split." And I keep saying to myself, who's, everything is split. Who's surprised by this? What institution isn't split? And I think what's made this school so great is we're not split. This is a community that doesn't care if you're on the board, whether you're a Democrat or a Republican, and it's a board that has managed not to rule by compromise, which is what we're hoping the country could get to, but actually to rule by consensus, and that's pretty remarkable. And that doesn't happen unless every single board member really understands what civic duty is about. So enough of a speech for a minute, but it's been a significant contribution by the other board members, or Alvin and Joyce, a few of us. I echo all of that, and it's not that we haven't had differences of opinion, we have differences of opinion every meeting on every issue, and we get through them, but each of you guys has really helped bring us to consensus by always reminding us that it's at bottom about the kids, and maybe that's why there's no split, is if you are re-centered all the time to think about the impact that stuff has on kids and whether or not it's helping kids, it's kind of what we're doing, and we can all agree on what helps and what doesn't at the end of the day. I appreciate your input, both of you.
I will miss both of you. We shared our table with grace, with education, with integrity. I believe as friends, we say, "Don't be strangers." I will be surprised to see either of you out of the audience in the near future, but...
Set your Dvrs to watch.
Yeah, but six years is ample service to a community. You'd be congratulated, but as I said, we will miss you, but the community really has benefited more than they know by your service, so congratulations to each of you.
I feel a real kinship with the two of you since we started together. We campaigned at the same time, we went through our learning curve together, so I'm really going to feel the loss of you two, not being here and not seeing your faces every two weeks, and every meeting is in the building else, but, yeah, I echo everything everybody said. You guys really serve with integrity and empathy, so thank you, thank you for all your hours put in on the effort for our kids.
I think that's the first time somebody got choked up at a board meeting since Jackie Taylor's been gone.
She got choked up with the weather.
So congratulations. That said, we want you to remember us, so just a little something that you might want to put on a bookshelf or a side table or something like that, but...
Is this the new school law book?
I could have Janine put the board meetings on your calendar, but I think this would be better.
Use it well.
Thank you.
Very nice. Do you guys want to say anything for you?
I told Brett, I, you know, I appreciate all the comments. I think particularly about remembering the kids, I always would try to just, you know, ground myself by, you know, reminding myself before each board meeting, "This is really what it's about," you know, pulling myself here in the winter.
Yes.
But, yeah, so I think, you know, it's good to hear that, you know, it's, you see it that way, and I always try to just kind of...
Made a difference.
Keep it that.
I just want to thank the present board and the past boards that I've worked with, and the teachers, the faculty, the staff, the administration, the district office, because it really is a group effort. So if I have made any difference, it's not really an individual effort, it's really a work of a lot of people working together. And sort of to echo what Bill said, you know, I'm thinking about leaving the board, which was a difficult decision to make. I do want to make a pitch for those that are watching or listening, that community service really matters. It doesn't matter how you do it, you could be elected to... It doesn't matter how you do it, you could be an elected official, you can volunteer, especially at a time when things are divisive and things can just be plain mean. We really do have the ability to impact what happens around us and the kind of language that's used. And at the end of the day, we can change what happens if we choose to get involved. And too many people, for probably very valid reasons, don't, but for those of us who have the time and the motivation to do so, it's personally very rewarding, but mostly you really can make a difference. And I think that's a really important lesson to take away.
I just want to add my thank you. Thank you to my fellow board members, administrative staff, and the supporting staff. Just thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
That was my report.
Thanks. Brett, you're-
Thank you. Some more thanks in order. I'd like to thank the community for coming out and supporting the budget. We all know how much effort and work we all put into it, many bodies, many thoughts, many compromises as we go through the process. This was our first year as mandated by state law to have optical scan machines. They worked better than I thought, I was happy with that. We'll improve our system a little bit next year. We have five books, it will go down to four because we look at the bold system, which we use for election management software, and it gives us a lot of useful information. And part of it is that our voter distribution based on name doesn't go based on numbers that are in each book. So we'll be able to reduce our costs slightly by having fewer people working at the polls and won't slow anything down. I looked at all the reports that I shared with the board and tried to look at what an average voter would be for Byram Hills, and it's a person between 40 and 50 years old, which is older than I thought it'd be, and they tend to vote between 4:00 and 7:00 PM. That's your typical voter profile. Majority of voters are between the ages of 40 and 60, which is no surprise, but that number of voters is increasing this past few years, which is interesting too. So they're getting more involved, not less involved.
You know, I think, I'm wondering, you know how that is our, the older kids are our biggest group of kids and the parents got older, I'm thinking maybe that's what it is.
And we are seeing an uptick in voter involvement, even though it's at 9%.
It is coming off of an all-time low last year. So there is hope for more involvement by the public. Obviously, we received overwhelming support for this budget and work of the board, which is a wonderful mandate, support of our superintendent. It's all, it's all very important to keep this amazing school in the position that it is. We all thank each other, but really, the community is the one that props us up. They really do provide us support, give us that mandate to move forward in what we've done. And I always look at that, that a vote means more than just money. It's how people perceive the value of education here, of the meaning of this organization to the community at large, and the involvement of a lot of people that have great intentions and care for children, which is very important. So that's, that's my report.
Thanks.
Thank you, well said.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, and Tim, you have it.
Do a brief presentation here. Want to give you one more STEAM update, but I want to give the STEAM update because it relates to, Ira, I hope I hold up to your standards. I'm nervous now.
I said I had a STEAM.
Because it's a good segue into a curricular initiative that we're launching this summer. So it relates to STEAM, but it's also going to become bigger. So what I'm going to show you is an example of a third-grade STEAM activity and how that relates curriculally to our initiative, and give you that example. And this particular example relates to our engineering standard. You've seen this graphic from me before, which shows the engineering process, which is part of our STEAM work that we're doing, is creating design processes for students as they engage in problem solving. So this particular task was done because next year, every Wampus classroom is going to pilot a STEAM unit, interdisciplinary STEAM unit at every grade level in grades three through five. Before engaging in that, we had already reviewed some curriculum and two teachers, our building technology consultant, Al Lovelace, and our library media specialist, Jessica Murdy, wanted to pre-pilot it. They wanted to test out the unit so they knew how, what they had to learn in order to support teachers going into it next year. So they did this through the encore class, they combined two encore classes. And the task, you don't have to read all this, this is the design of all these tasks where they have essential questions that guide the thinking for students. And then there's a task, it's a problem-based task that students have to engage in. In this particular task, students are asked, they're creative designers, to create a backpack for a particular target audience, and they have to design their task with a particular target audience in mind. And then there's big ideas. These are always the concepts that we want students to be thinking about as they engage in this task. So I'm going to just show you some pictures of what happened with that. These were students who had to collaborate, they were put into groups of three where they were working to design their backpack. So they made all the decisions. They decided who their audience was going to be, what the focus of their backpack was going to be. So if you were an athletics student, what was that backpack going to look like? You know, they had to make those decisions, so they did some research on collaborating together on this. They would decide what tools they wanted to use in terms of how to find and record their, their learning. Some students were using the Chromebooks, others writing it down on paper and pencil. And again, this is student choice making those decisions. What I thought was interesting in these pictures, as you look through, you see students working in different ways. You're rarely seeing students sitting, or not seeing students sitting at rows and desks. I like these two on the top with these students, one sort of lounging on the beanbags, the other sort of helping them out. There was a lot of movement with students feeling active in their learning. And each of these groups working in very different ways, but what meets their needs in the learning process. They share responsibilities, as you see here, these students taking turns doing a design on the Chromebook. You have this group deciding they're all going to sketch out ideas separately. So students make decisions about how they're going to work together. And then it really felt like as students were starting to go from the research to the design phase, the actual construction of their backpacks, it felt like a design lab, where students were just working. It almost felt like the project runway of backpack design for students. It was so active, there was a lot of energy and students making choices and creating fabrics and cutting and, and there were some tense moments with students, but it was all managed. You can see in these pictures, I was, would go in periodically and take pictures. I don't know if I ever captured teachers in these pictures. There were the two teachers, Al Lovelace and Jessica Murdy, talking to the students, but they were really not the center of the work. I would hear the teachers, I'm including student quotes here, the teachers were also doing a lot of asking enough questions. When a kid would come up with a problem, the teacher would say, well, why are you making that choice? And how did you get to that? And is that going to work? Can you tell me how, why you think that's going to work? So it was a lot of guiding through probing questions of students. And then finally, students present their final backpacks, they talk about who their target audience was, did it work? Did it meet that? What was the purpose? What did you learn in the process of creating your backpacks? And so there's a lot of self-evaluation that occurs throughout the entire process and at the end as well. So this is leading us to STEAM, as Dr. Taylor and I, our Director of Technology, were thinking about STEAM, we were looking at problem-based frameworks. And as we started to think about it with STEAM, it really leads to, all curricular areas could be problem-based. And I'll just show you a quick graphic of conceptual design and how problem-based learning is different than the traditional classroom. So a traditional classroom might look like this, where the concept skills and content are taught first in isolation, and then it ends with some sort of application of that knowledge, which is done so students could demonstrate their mastery of the concepts. And it's generally directed by the teacher. That's a traditional classroom model. And a problem-based model, the students are at the center, you start with the application or you start with a problem or a task that students have to accomplish, and the concept skills and content grow out of students' exploration of that learning. And so it's what we call in education creating, it felt neat. Here's a problem, you're going to have to learn some skills and content through exploring a solution to that problem. And the backpack problem simulated that. Students had to design something, so they had to learn, well, what goes into making a backpack? And what would an audience be interested in in designing a backpack? And so students learn various skills and concepts and content through the exploration of that problem. And so that is some training we're going to be starting with teachers this summer. We'll be doing it through our cyber camp. Our cyber camp is focusing on problem-based learning. We have a variety of teachers across the district coming to take part in that. But also, Wampus has another session. We have 10 Wampus teachers who will be participating in an eight-day training session this summer on problem-based learning to get ready to do this work next year in the classrooms. So that's a little bit of a summary of some of the STEAM work that's happening, and then also a preview of some of the instructional work that we'll be doing over the next quarters.
I'm feeling like I exemplify the term old school when I was seeing that, you know, that makes sense to me, the concept thing and the assessments at the top. Is one approach or the other more efficient in terms of its use of time? Because you're, you want to get the content and the content, the content skills and concepts to the class, either way, right? They have to have that content and the concepts. But it would seem to me that it's a lot slower when you're doing this problem thing and you, you know.
My initial reaction is, you're right, and this is the way we've traditionally looked at learning. What's the most efficient way to get the content out? And it, I would say generally, Tim, that is, if your focus is on the content, the one on the right is the more efficient way. But what it doesn't do is provide any analysis or creative thinking or problem solving. So the one on the left, I think, we believe, I don't think we know this yet, is actually more efficient because you learn not only the content and skills, but also you learn to analyze a problem and solve it collaboratively.
It's the same as like the new math, instead of just memorizing the concepts.
I think, would you agree?
Yes, I do agree with that. And it's also, a couple of things happen. Is this really efficient when maybe we do all this teaching, then we test kids at the end and we realize, oh, there's, 25% didn't understand it, so now we have to go back and do some reteaching.
Right.
And maybe they're getting skills, but they're not getting the concepts, so now I have to do some interventions. Where, and here, when kids are exploring it, you're more of a facilitator of the learning and you're able to create mini lessons if you need to grab some students along and do some learning in time during the class session. So it depends on how we define efficiency. This could also be a little messier because some kids may learn different skills at different times. One example that Al Lovelace told me was, he remembers when he was teaching technology courses, he used to have classes on how to use PowerPoint. And his encore class would be 18 days of learning PowerPoint. The end goal was creating a PowerPoint presentation. Now, he said, when we were going through those pictures, you saw some students in the presentations use Google Slides, never taught Google Slides. He just said to students, you have to present your work, and they had to decide how they were going to present it. And those students who learned Google Slides learned on their own. And he did so many lessons, but some students learned Google Slides, some didn't, some may learn that later. But he didn't have to teach a course on it. More time could be spent learning the skills and content that were important to learning, and those other things grow out of other ways of learning.
I did, I think it's this technological world we live in, that the content skills and concepts are almost commodities at this point, to the extent that, you know, in spreadsheets, you kind of had to know the math to make it work. Well, you know, with technological innovation, not that you don't have to understand the concepts, but the concepts are less important as long as we can get to the goal and the understanding. I think that's what we're kind of all, through the technological innovation, you know, we used to have to know how to use a calendar, now you just upload your dates. So I think, I think that's what's driving a lot of our young, the PowerPoint and the technological piece has kind of improved their ability to get through the concepts and that a lot quicker, so it's really interesting.
Graphic calculators.
And the debate, and we have, still have the debate, to what degree do we need to learn how to simplify radicalism? Can I leave it as radical 20 and use my calculator again approximation, or do I need to know, you know, that it's too radical 10? These are what debates we're having.
And I think thinking of content as a commodity is a challenge. Because that's a real shift for schools, let alone skills.
It really is. I guess kids are probably at very different levels, like much more differentiated learning than in the past, everything. Because you're saying that, you know, like somebody's doing the Google Slides and somebody else may be using learning it, they're at a different places. It's really a real challenging classroom, but exciting.
So there's a, to do this model's a whole new skill set for teachers, to be able to learn new strategies, new classroom routines, new expectations for kids. And so a lot of training takes place in order to get to this. It's not that you can just start doing it. And these teachers learned it, so they just started to do it. They jumped in, and in the encore class, they're like, wow, we got a lot to learn in order to support this learning. But it was really valuable for those teachers who will be supporting Wampus teachers next year to know that we have to give some new supports and have teachers think differently about their classroom structures.
And Tim, Jen and I, because this is my anxiety, when these kids get to the high school and they're faced with regents, which is all content commodity, what do we do? I mean, that's a real dilemma for me.
You got to balance it.
Yeah.
I mean, it's tough. We want the kids to be effective in the 21st century, you've got to teach them how to problem solve, but they have to pass an AP.
So what is that balance?
You know, most kids can study for stuff like that on their own now, get the content and drill down, but they can't replicate learning how to think.
Nope.
Yes, ma'am.
It is.
So I'll be sharing more about our learning as we go through this training session with a good number of teachers next year, about 40, some teachers will be trained over the summer. So I'll keep you posted.
All right, thanks.
Throughout next year. We'll provide coaching as well next year.
Okay, great, thank you so much. And Jen, Tim, your was your report, grand, okay. All right, that moves us on to board reports. Presence for us should know that Scotty is not here today, but will be here for the next meeting. And I just wanted to highlight one thing, commend our business office, back to Susan and your staff, Louis and Buster's service annual comment on our district financial position, I just wanted to include the quote that they gave our district, robust in line with assigned ratings of a triple A, and they also made mention of our strong financial management in that report. And I just wanted to highlight that and let our community know because it's pretty phenomenal. Fantastic work and thank you for the light that you put our district and our financial integrity and endurance to be behind it. Brings us to committee and board reports. Does anybody have any committee or board reports to share?
Give a quick update on athletic advisory council. Rob had a meeting, I believe it was two Fridays ago, detailing the number of coaching positions, which I thought was amazing. Over, I think there are 110 coaching positions, of which slightly more than half are non-employee positions. It's an overwhelming task. Just, I think that, you know, communicating that and having everyone understand the complexity around that's really important. His philosophy around communication, I think, is, is, is great. I think he's done a, from my perspective, done a great job in his first full year with large task, I mean, great, great programs, and needless to say how well some of our teams have performed. Lastly, around that, I would mention at his annual meeting this week for modified JV and varsity teams fall sports, this openness around protocol of parent-coach communication. So there's been a lot communicated around how parents should be communicating to coaches, how coaches should be communicating, and I think Rob's been great at communicating that players should communicate to their coaches, issues, concerns, if those aren't being addressed appropriately, the parent can reach out to the coach and communicate those concerns, but in a format-
The parent can reach out to the coach and communicate those concerns, but in a format that is scheduled and in appropriate time, not in a heated moment of a game or in the parking lot.
Not within 24 hours.
That's correct, and it's kind of cool and off period, if you will. But I think the openness of communicating that, that type of protocol, so not addressing the coach at a game, starting with your child, communicating directly to the coach, and then if, after your child not being successful, the parent and scheduling a time with the coach, and certainly reaching out to Rob after both of those things haven't worked, I think that clear communication was great for the community and something I wanted to echo here as well.
How have the meetings been going? Is that a procedure of the Athletic Advisory Committee? Are they once a month?
They're once a month.
Attended?
They've been well attended. The last one was a little light. Rob also, at the request of another member of the Advisory Council, did not have any teachers at that meeting. There were some things I wanted to be communicated, nothing that I would reiterate here was more. There are, parents just wanted to ask some questions without the coaches there. And those questions, none of them actually, the turnout for that meeting was quite light. There was nothing that I didn't think the teachers could have been there for, but he did exclude the teachers from the last meeting. He mentioned for next year, he'd like to open up that advisory council attendance to students as well, have representation from the students on that advisory council, which I think is a great idea. But ironically, at that meeting, there was nothing brought up that I don't think could have been brought up in front of the teachers. And, but he did have a meeting just with the parents, probably only eight or nine members at the students' meeting, so.
Still not bad. It's more than it used to be.
Mike had a philosophy, this goes to the question of the mix of teacher coaches versus outside coaches. And Mike always had a philosophy that, you know, he would try and as much as possible make sure that there was a teacher on the sideline or the court side, whatever it was. But oftentimes, teachers don't have the expertise, or you can get somebody who's kind of got an interest but not the, and you bring in an assistant from the outside that might be first-rate in terms of the expertise to help out. Does Rob, do you know, have the same philosophy of trying to get teachers?
I think that's Rob, and that's also a district philosophy, to the extent that he's communicated that would be his first preference, to have teachers engaged. That did come up at a previous meeting in and around. Many of the teachers don't live in the area, and it's very difficult for them to make that commitment.
Yeah, yeah.
And the coaches that don't live in the area and still make the commitment, we're mentioning, you know, they get home at 8:00 or 9:00 o'clock at night, and not that the stipend is insignificant, but I think the, in spending a year in those meetings and getting to know the coaches better, our coaches are really committed to helping our kids, and the stipend tends to be a, you know, a nice benefit, but not the driving force for them wanting to coach. So, which is, you know, which is great.
But they're student athletes, not athlete students, which is what we always say, and there's so many benefits from having a teacher who knows the student in the school, see what's happening out on the field, and there's, you know, even if it costs wins on the win-loss form, it's critically important to be there to support the whole child.
That's right. We, I think one of the nice things about seeing Rob come into his own over his first year, and I don't think I'm speaking, but just this idea that he's getting comfortable and his footprint and philosophies, we'll be feeling those in the district. But most importantly, I think as an administration head and a director, this idea to communicate in an effective manner, and the openness for feedback, so the web app, communicating, games scheduled, I mean, there's been some really nice movements with respect to improving the communication, incorporating the seventh grade modified to the season's meeting. In the past, they used to have seventh, the modified players have a separate meeting and didn't include them in the full sports for the next season's sports, and I think the turnout, I mean, the turnout this week was phenomenal.
Turnout was incredible, to see that.
And it's nice, yeah, it's nice to see the younger students, they'll meet some of the older players, and I think it creates a bit of enthusiasm for some sports that maybe some students weren't thinking of.
Thank you. Any other committee reports, board reports?
West Putt had its end-of-the-year meeting, and Chancellor Rosa, Betty Rosa, was the keynote speaker. Bill and Scott and I were at the, at the meeting, and I had an opportunity actually to, I was sitting next to Chancellor Rosa during the dinner, and had an opportunity to really get to know her a little bit and talk a lot of shop. And I'm really encouraged. And another benefit of this advocacy thing is that I think we have now much, we have really good relationships with Judith Johnson, our chancellor, who came this year and spent time in our district, and now Betty Rosa. And it really, it's a good thing to have those strong, you know, she's the numeral Tish. And my report is that I'm really encouraged by the direction that everything's going for now. I mean, cautiously optimistic, I guess, is the right, instead of really just discouraged like I was last year, pounding our collective heads against the wall. So that's my report. We have our final board meeting of the year this Thursday night.
There is one thing, Robin, athletically. I think we have to send a major congratulations to the girls' track team, section B champions, I'm, section one, class B champions, that's a tremendous accomplishment. So to the athletes, Coach Govan and the whole staff, thrilled for you, wonderfully done. It's really a great accomplishment. I know we sent a golfer to, at least one girl golfer to the States, maybe a boy golfer as well, I believe we did. So congratulations to the golf team, baseball team. It's hard to repeat, hard to climb that same mountain twice, but they had a great season. Congratulations to Coach Saunders and the whole team. They leave behind a very formidable legacy to this class that's graduating. And I know because of this team, they're talking about changing the playoff format to where after the first round, the next few rounds are two out of three, so you have a chance not to slide out just in case you have one tough game. But all in all, another very strong season for Byram Hills Athletics. But again, a special congratulations and shout-out to the girls' track team. Section champions is always a wonderful compliment.
Very nice. And Policy Committee did not meet because we finished all our work, thanks to Islam out there. So it's not meeting again until next year, right?
I thought it was best to hold new policies for, yeah, nice work.
All the backlogs gone? Of course. That's awesome, yeah. That's awesome.
Pretty amazing. And Tom Miezan had our last meeting, last week, last meeting for this school year. Okay. And Communications to the Board, I shared with the board two communications. One was a thank you note from the CSA, and the other one was an email that I shared with you all this morning from a community member. Can I have a motion to approve a Board of Education minutes from April 26, 2016, May 3rd, 2016, and May 17, 2016?
So moved.
A second?
Sure.
Okay. Does anybody have any changes or comments on it? Any other? Okay. All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Once again, thank you. Okay. And the board, as I said, met in executive session prior, I listed the items. We have one more, which was the superintendent's evaluation that we're going to do now. So we're going to exclude ourselves from public, and can I have a motion to go back into executive session?
So moved.
A second?
Sure.
All in favor? Good night. Thank you for watching.